All right. We're going to get started again with the final portion of the meeting. Let's make sure we have all the council members back at their seats. All right. So, we're going to get started now with the final item on tonight's agenda. It's S6, which is dealing with unresolved issues between the City of Phoenix and Phoenix Law Enforcement Association, Unit 4. Before I open the public hearing, my proposed procedural rules for how we're going to proceed tonight is I will have, ask our city manager to present up to 15 minutes on the management's position on these important issues. I will then have representative of plea, one or more representatives, have the same amount of time to present their position on these important issues. And then we will go to public comment and have, again, up to two minutes for each of the people who are here for public comment. At the end of the public comment period, we will close the public hearing. It'll be at that time that we'll entertain a motion from, or motions from, members of this council. I'll try to call, there's a lot of cards here, so I'll try to call three or four at a time. If you could just take the empty seats to my right, near the microphone, that would work out okay. Does any member of the council want to proceed differently than that? We will give, at the end of the, at the end of the public hearing portion of it, and a time for the council members to speak, I would request that we give each council member up to 10 minutes for questions and comments that they may have. Again, does anyone on the council disagree with that as a way to proceed? Okay. So, we will now then open the public hearing on S6. A matter involving unresolved issues between the City of Phoenix and Phoenix Law Enforcement Association, Unit 4. As stated, Mr. Zerker, I think you are presenting tonight, so you've taken your switched seats from the normal city manager position to that position in order to present to the council and to the public. Council Waring will time you for 15 minutes. If you go slightly over, it's okay, but I'll make sure we give plea equal time. So, without further ado, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I will try to do much less than 15 minutes. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for this opportunity. I first want to start by thanking our negotiating team, Cindy Bezary, Judy Burrows, Elisa Blandford, Stephanie Hart. They've done a great job. I very much appreciate what they've done. I also want to commend our city employees and their labor representatives who have been so passionate about representing themselves and those who represent their members. They're doing what they were elected to do by their union membership. I respect that. But I am here tonight to do what you hired me to do, and that's passionately represent all city employees and all those who depend on and receive city services, and to work for the nine of you who together represent all Phoenicians. So, the management team has negotiated these contracts to have equal sacrifices because the community is depending on all of us to do what we can to save services. If everyone does something, no one has to do everything. We're asking the residents to pay a little more in taxes and fees so we can preserve our valuable police and fire services, senior centers, parks, swimming pools, graffiti busters, code enforcement, 911 operators, and everything else the public told us is important. And we're asking employees to reduce compensation a little to preserve jobs and services. That's what makes this budget and this city work. All employees and the public pitching in together. Our city employees, as we heard, provide great services. They are valuable members of the team. They provide things that the community values highly. They work hard. Our police officers provide valuable service to the community. They provide great service. They are valued. They work hard. In recognition of their service to the public and the risks they take for us all, we compensate them accordingly, and we compensate them well. It's very important to note that opportunity for merit and longevity pay increases still exist in the city's final pay proposal. It's very important to note that the city has continued to invest, as Councilman Gates noted, significant amounts of money in pensions and health care benefits for our employees. And you'll see, that's really where our money has gone. The money that we might have had for more services or more pay has gone to make sure that the obligations we owe our employees, our police officers, that's the pension that will be there when they retire, that that is there. Each police officer's pension cost is funded by the city to make sure that the pension promise is available to them and their families, as it should be. Each police officer's health care benefit is fully funded to provide important protection to officers and their families. Our officers will still be highly compensated compared to other city employees and compared to other police officers in the state, as it should be. And we will be able to begin hiring police officers again early next year, a full nine months ahead of the previous schedule because of these compensation concessions being asked. I believe this final proposed compensation concession package that I'll describe best protects officers' pay given our difficult circumstances, this is not desirable for any labor group, any employee, but it is where we are because of the expenses that we are trying to keep up with. And now I'll walk through where we are. This chart we use quite often in our city budget hearings, it shows that the police department is our single largest expenditure in the general fund, as it should be. It is the priority of the community for public safety. Nearly $480 million for police services funded by our general fund. The police budget continues to grow year over year, as you see, from 2010, 11, increased each year, including next year over this year. Our police officer pay, as it should be, we are proud of this, that when you look at salary, longevity, and CEP pay, our average officer with 14 years is making more than the others in the state, as it should be. Our police take-home pay, just to look at what's happened during this great recession, we have continued, as I said, with merit and longevity steps, and our continuing education program, CEP, and all those things, has grown for those officers as they've gained skill over those five years, as they've moved through the merit system, their pay, their take-home pay has grown. What have we done in the last six years? The gray bars are civilian employee pay packages. From '06, '08, everyone got 8%. In '08, '10, everyone got 4.1%, and our public safety members got extra that year. And then we shared in the last two contracts, as I'm proposing that we share again in this contract. Our police officers during that time saw their base wage increase greater than others in the state, and we should be proud of that for our officers. But here's the trick. Our extra resources really have gone to police pensions, and it's not just police, it's across the board, civilians and public safety. But when we're talking here about where the money is, you can see the growth in our pension obligation that we're paying to PSPRS, including next year, an additional $7 million over this year. That per-officer pension cost, if we look at that officer who was hired in 1999, in 1998, '99, we were paying $2,146 per officer for police pensions, and that has now grown. The city is paying $32,500 for that officer today. That's where the money's gone. For the officer hired in '09 that I talked about before, in '09, when they were hired, it was $14,000. Today, it's $29,000 obligation for the city for the pension cost. That's our commitment to keep the pension there for the officers. The average total compensation, which gets discussed quite a bit, and here, again, this is an illustration that our officers are paid relative to the risks they take compared to our civilians. The blue bar is the average total compensation. Now, this is all-in, this is wages, benefits, everything together. This is not the salary. This is the value of the whole package from 1999, 2009, and currently. In the blue, it would be our police officer's average compensation, total compensation, and compared to our total civilian average compensation. Again, the illustration is that our pay system recognizes the extraordinary work that we ask of our police officers. So, this compensation reduction that we're asking of all our employees is not about whether we value them or not, it's about all of us sharing together to solve the budget situation that we find ourselves in. The value of the work they do, I think, is shown through this slide. Our proposal to plea started at continuing 1.6 concessions and new concessions of 3% over two years. As we talked, and after the fact-finder, we talked about 2.5% over two years with continuing 1.6. Our proposal was to freeze merit and productivity enhancement pay, which is the new name for longevity, and end pension spiking provisions consistent with the council's action in October. That was where we were with the fact-finder. The reason for the merit and longevity freeze in this was we were trying to do things to minimize the effect on take-home pay from today. But clearly, the freeze in merit and longevity is not a desired outcome for any of our employees because it provides them an opportunity to continue to get pay increases through the merit system, particularly our younger and newer folks there. So, where we were then after last week's hearing was the city management proposal is now continuing concessions of 1.6% and new concessions of 1.6% in the first year. And again, these numbers are exactly the same as all other city employee groups. And that 1.6 is contained, consists of eliminating pension spiking provisions, including selling vacation on a holiday, including in-lu pays for uniform, vacation, and sick leave, eliminating additional payments to a post-employment health plan, reducing the annual uniform allowance by $650, reducing deferred compensation from 0.37% to 0.1, and 12 hours of unpaid holiday. Again, attempting to stay away from wage, attempting to stay away from merit and step increases in longevity. And the 0.9% in the second year was, you continue the first year, and then there would be an additional 24 hours of unpaid holiday. Officers who do work the holiday would continue to get the holiday premium, they would just get paid on the holiday. Okay, thank you. Not the holiday pay, but regular work pay. And then we would include, as with others, a re-opener language in the second year, based on any general fund surplus over $10 million, we would reopen with our labor groups to talk about compensation there. As a result of the compensation cost reductions that the general fund saves and the public safety funds, the dedicated 3/10 of ascent taxes that support our public safety funds, it helps accelerate the balancing plan for those funds, which have been overextended for the last five years. And the council balanced without laying off any officers, instead going through attrition. What it does, it allows us to advance the hiring of police officers from late 2015 to early 2015 by nine months. In addition, the balanced budget plan allows us to complete the civilianization of central booking so that 15 officers who are in central booking today would be replaced by 15 civilians, and those police officer positions would be freed to go back to patrol or investigations based on the department's seniority system. There are several tentative agreements that we did reach with plea leaders, and I want to commend them for their work with us, that are listed here. I won't read through all of them, but they're basically technical changes in language that we could agree with management and labor on 11 different items in the thing. We would recommend the council would accept those as fairly negotiated together. And in final, this would be our recommendation for you, which would be to impose all 11 tentative agreements between the city and plea, as we both agreed to, and all pension spiking consistent with other sworn employees, and include the value of the savings as credit towards concessions. This does include eliminating selling vacation hours on a holiday, continuing the concessions of 1.6% from the previous contract, new concessions of 1.6% in the first year as listed, and an additional 0.9% in the second year as listed, and the re-opener language in the second year, consistent with all other units, based on a formula about any potential general fund surplus so that employees would share in that. Fat Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager. I think the fairest thing is to give representatives of Phoenix Law Enforcement Association opportunity to present.
I have a couple just to add if I could.
Well, as I said, I think the procedure that we agreed to and wasn't objected to was to allow, so I think we're going to have plea make their presentation, and then you'll have full and fair opportunity to ask questions at that time.
It just revolves around the presentation we just had that we never got a copy of.
You'll have a chance to ask as soon as represented as the Phoenix Law Enforcement Association have had the opportunity.
But why weren't we given the information way ahead of time so we could respond to it, at least look at it?
Okay. We'll have a chance to do that, but first, as we agreed to earlier, I'm going to hand the time over to Will Bouvetas, who is representing the Phoenix Law Enforcement Association, to make his presentation.
Just keeping information from the council again, Mayor. And I just don't know why we just got it.
Up to 15 minutes. Counsel, thank you. We'll have the opportunity to make that point in just a moment. Mr. Bouvetas, your time, please.
It's strange.
I'd like to start out with a couple of things before I go into my official speech. Earlier today, we had a gentleman come up here who was filming himself and said a lot of bad things about the cops. But you know what? He had a constitutional right to say those things. That's what we do. We protect people's constitutional rights. It's come to my attention that the chief and Chief Markley have been directed to be here tonight. I would hope Mayor and City Manager, they're not here to try to impede on my guys' constitutional right and constitutional free speech. So, I'd like to get some clarification. They're not here to try to intimidate them from speaking their minds of what they think of our situation tonight.
I think anything's on the table, so please.
Okay.
Bill, you might also want to point out, no other chief was here, nor the department head was here, nobody else was here.
Correct. Last time, there was nobody from the department here.
Right.
So, I find that very interesting. The other thing I'd like to comment on real fast is Councilman Alkowsky made some comments a little bit ago, referenced the mismanagement of the budget last year and the year before. And I guess my question is, is I think I agree with that. But during that same time, this council, or at least members of this council, voted to give that city manager a significant pay raise, and you guys also voted to cut the food tax. And to date, not one of you has made a motion to put the food tax back, either put it back in effect or put it on the ballot. If there was mismanagement of the budget, then one of you guys should have the political courage to make the motion to bring the food tax back. So, I would just comment on that.[1096.33][1096.33](APPLAUSE). You know, again, my name is Will Bouvetas. I'm the treasurer of the Phoenix Law Enforcement Association. This will not be the same type of speech I gave last Wednesday because, quite frankly, I'm exhausted. I've been exhausted for the past week of dealing with each one of you till late in the night. It's been very exhausting. I mentally drain, the men and women behind me here, I think, are mentally drained from dealing with the situation. But I'll tell you what, I still have the proud honor to serve and represent these men and women behind me. If the passion, and I guess where we're at is if the passion and love shown for the city last week didn't change your guys' minds, I don't know what will. If it did not change your minds to task the city manager to find a solution, which apparently it didn't because he hasn't found a solution other than to impose cuts on that, I don't know what will change your minds. But hopefully, tonight, I will try again. Over the past week, I spoke and met with most of you, and just like I mentioned earlier today, and even Councilman Alkowsky indicated, and Councilwoman Thelma Williams indicated last week, we believe that you guys realize that actions of this council and past councils have put us in this situation. And now, you are using these men and women as political scapegoats for those failures. This is more, all the more obvious after these cops behind me prevailed in fact-finding. There appears to be no concern as to the political ramifications of your vote. I hope in the next while you will listen as these men and women behind me get up here and testify and realize that your vote tonight will change the political landscape of Phoenix for years to come. If you think these brave men and women will have short memories, you are making a huge political miscalculation. Equally important, that would show evidence that you have ignored the hard evidence that came as a result of fact-finding. Let's talk about those numbers. They are real numbers. They are not some made-up fantasy numbers like the ones that you guys have been presented time and time again, as Councilman Alkowsky indicated. You have heard the evidence about how these cops compare to selected counterparts that the city consider as a peer. However, there is one problem. It's all a bunch of smoke and mirrors. The city wants to use our all-in compensation. If you look on their slides, they presented, they present CEP, they present merits, they present longevity, they present deferred comp, they present lots of stuff. So, they want to use that and compare it to the base salary of other agencies. In fact, during fact-finding, Kathy McIntyre, who is the human resource expert on compensation, when asked during testimony, asked what they asked the other agencies pay their officers, she told us in fact-finding she was given a directive from her boss to only ask, do they provide career enhancement pay? She told us she was not asked to ask if they provide education pay, if they provide detective pay, if they provide training pay, or any other of the dozens of components that go into CEP. In fact, when asked directly, she could not even name one single thing that went into CEP, and she's the one that did those graphs and, or clicked at the data for those graphs you guys saw. How can you trust those numbers when the city, when the person doing the graphs doesn't even know what goes into CEP? Here's the real study. This is the one that this council, or at least the council before you commissioned a couple of years ago, and this is the Siegel Study. I know it's very small there. You guys have it in your packet. I mean, you guys have seen this slide before, and this is the Siegel Study. On the very top there, you will see it's a total compensation study. You guys are the ones that called it that, or the majority of you called it that. That's what the city did, a total compensation study. In this study, this clearly indicates that these men and women behind me are at 98% of the market. It also indicates at the bottom there that the average public safety servant in the city is at 110% of the market. And I believe even Councilman DeCicile pointed that out two years ago when the study came out. These cops, if you look at that study, are the only group paid below the market rate. Chiefs, commanders, firefighters, fire captains, they are all paid above the market rate. It's only these rank-and-file men and women behind me, these officers and detectives, that are paid below the market rank. How is that shared sacrifice? This chart was produced by the city for fact-finding. It shows us about 1% below the average for base wage. You see our little graph there? We're six from the bottom, so there's eight charts there. We're number six. So, that means we're second or third from the lowest, not up at the top. We're at the very, very bottom. We keep talking about shared sacrifice, but the city finds it perfectly acceptable to have our bar, two from the bottom, and to have the fire bar, one from the top. This chart here is also produced for fact-finding by the city. It shows, it's small up there, but it's in your packet, that the firefighters are paid 6.5% above the market average, and they are number two in the market with base pay, right below the top, I think only $200 below Scottsdale when it comes to base pay. And this does not even account to the guaranteed overtime that's built into their contract. One of these is not like the other. These men and women behind me are sick and tired of being the city's punching bag and taking cuts just to hand that money over to the firefighters in terms of increased Let's talk about a couple of things in the FIRE MOU, which I am surprised when I mention it to a couple of you guys, you guys claim you had no clue about and had never, ever read the FIRE MOU. And that is, in their MOU, this is right from their MOU, our 56th and 55th and 56th hour of the work week are paid at double time. So, you guys put it in their MOU, you guys didn't take it out of the MOU you just voted on, to give them double time instead of regular overtime. Regular overtime's time and a half, but you guys find it necessary to pay the firefighters double time. Isn't this a gross abuse of public money to pay them double time? I would imagine that if you ask Councilman Valenzuela over there, if he gets double time in Glendale, the answer is resounding no. I guarantee you, he does not get double time in Glendale. This is just another example of how we are different, of how you cannot compare the shared sacrifices of these police officers to the shared sacrifices of firefighters. If you guys guaranteed us constant staffing or guaranteed us overtime, these men and women would probably be more apt to take cuts, just like the firefighters. And here you go. These are the real numbers. This is right from the city budget. This is the constant staffing budget for FIRE. Any concessions they have made, they have made it up in overtime over the last five years. In 2009, the city spent $3 million in constant staffing. That's the, we have to have four people on a truck. Last year, or this year, excuse me, they are going to spend $8 million in constant staffing. So, let's do some simple math here because I'm not very smart. So, the total value of their concessions that they just took, the 1.6% for this first year to the general fund, is $3 million. So, they made $5 million extra in overtime, and now they're going to take a $3 million cut. That still equates to a $2 million increase in compensation. How is that a cut? How is that shared sacrifice? Now, let's look at these cops behind me. They've taken an almost 50% reduction in overtime. Their overtime has gone from almost $17 million a year in 2009 to under $10 million a year this year. That's a $7 million cut. So, over the last five years, firefighters have increased their pockets, increased their take-home pay by $5 million. These minimum behind me have decreased their pay by $7 million. Plus, they've decreased it by an additional $4 million because nobody's allowed to work the holidays, and that saved the city another $4 million. While firefighters still put the same number of trucks out on a holiday, we put one or two people out in a squad on a holiday in the city. It appears that this council only cares about parity when it makes political sense. I think if you believe it makes political sense to cut the cops and not respect the process like we've asked, that will be a very dangerous mistake. I find it ironic that just yesterday, one of my men sent me this picture, and there's about four or five fire trucks sitting right outside there. I could have put five or six slides, but I just did one. This is just, it illustrates how completely different of a job that we have. Why my men and women are required to work their entire shift, and in fact, they get disciplined if they stay 10 minutes extra on a lunch, so they spend 10 more minutes on their lunch break, they're going to get a written reprimand or get suspended. It is perfectly acceptable for the firefighters to work out or play volleyball or do whatever during their shift. These pictures show what is the equivalent to one or two patrol squads. That's the entire Maryville precinct on day shift playing volleyball right there.[1657.82][1657.82](APPLAUSE). So, not only do they get paid more than their counterparts, the firefighters, they get double time per their MOU, they also get 96 hours a year of personal leave on top of their vacation leave. When my cops get 20 hours, so the equivalent would be 29 hours since they work 2,900 hours, they aren't even expected to be out serving the citizens when they're not on a call. They are just expected to be waiting around and doing whatever, including playing volleyball, until the next call comes. Our jobs are apples and oranges, and trying to compare us and saying that we got to take the same cuts just doesn't work. And you know, Danny, I love you like a brother, and you're right, we've had many conversations, and you are right, you have at times been the lone voice on the council supporting these cops. You have been consistent in your desire to increase staffing, you've been consistent in your desire to establish some sort of minimum staffing requirement for police officers, and I cannot dispute that support for these men and women behind me. But I would like to make a point to a comment you made last week, and that is, the actual NFPA standard is two in, two out, not four in a truck. And why I completely agree with you that that standard has definitely saved firefighters' lives, these cops live under a different standard that you all find acceptable, and that is the one in, zero out standard. Let me repeat that. That is the one in, zero out standard. Because this city has decided it's perfectly okay to send one officer in to a dynamic situation, and all too often, that officer comes out in a body bag. Let me give you a few examples, and this is just a few of many. On March 26, 1999, Officer Mark Axson was involved in the pursuit of unarmed suspects by himself. He got involved in a deadly gun battle and was shot multiple times and killed. Or there's Officer Dave Uribe, who I used to work with on 92 Bravo, who on May 5, 2005, was conducting a traffic stop alone when the passenger leaned over. was conducting a traffic stop alone, when the passenger leaned over and executed Dave at point blank range. Hell, if we would have had two officers there, much less four, my guess is Dave would still be with us. Or there's Officer George Cortez, who in July 27, 2007, responded to a call of a couple passing forged checks at 83rd Avenue in Encanto. As he tried to take the male suspect into custody by himself, the suspect was able to pull a handgun out of his waistband and execute George. There are many more I could speak about. Again, our standard is one in, zero out, as opposed to four on a truck or two in, two out. We are different. We are very different. We have taken very different and much more cuts than fire. And it is absurd that this council continues to compare us to fire. We have a completely different job with completely different risks. All we are asking, just like last time, is to respect the process. We all know, it's no secret that you have the money to hold these cops harmless. It's $4 million out of a $1.1 billion budget. That will not break the bank to hold these men and women harmless. I know there is a solution out there that works. We only met with Ed for an hour on Friday. We asked some of you guys to direct Ed to meet with us Monday, Tuesday, or Sunday to try to come up with a solution. We never got a phone call from him, so I'm guessing that didn't happen. I don't know if the solution proposed by Councilman DeCicio, Waring, and Nowakowski is viable or not. I don't know if it's for political grandstanding or because they generally don't want to cut the cops. But at least those three, in particular, Councilman DeCicio, which is a pains me to say it sometimes, proposed a solution, or proposed a potential solution. If those, and I would say, if those lobbying dollars are returning us tens of millions of dollars in grants to the city, then maybe we shouldn't cut it. But maybe it's something we should look into to see what actual value we're getting out of those dollars. Again, I'll ask again, why do we have a meet and confer ordinance? Why do we have a fact finding process? It's not difficult to respect the process, to pay attention to the evidence, even though many of you up there are making it so. The fact that it appears that the majority of you are concerned with other employees in the city and not these cops that go out there and serve you ever, every day, sometimes with their lives, is just not equitable, because these guys have taken cut after cut after cut. The question I got to ask you is which of those other employee groups have a Detective Hobbs among them? I would say none of them do. It seems this council is okay with being the only council in the history of the city of Phoenix to go against an independent arbitrator's decision and shove cuts down these cops' throats. I hope I am wrong on that note. One thing is for certain, the political landscape in the city has changed for the foreseeable future. You have accomplished one thing, and that is, your actions, or rather inactions, have awakened the sleeping giant. For far too long, these cops have sat in the background while past firefighter union presidents get jobs as high-paid lobbyists for the city. They have let fire be the major political players in the city of Phoenix. No more. No more will these men and women stand by while firefighters cut deals that only benefit them while screwing the cops and every other city employee. No more will they support candidates who say they stand with the cops, but that promise slowly gets forgotten the further from election day we go. You have succeeded on one front, and that is, the sleeping giant is now wide awake, and you have ensured it will have a voice for years to come. All we ask you to do is respect the process and protect those who protect you. It is an easy decision, but for some of you, you are making it hard. Remember, at the end of the day, no one cares about campaign statements, no one cares about speeches after an officer is killed. The only thing people care about is your vote. Are you going to cut these cops or not? All we're asking is for you to respect the process and protect those who protect you. Remember, you have the final say. The nine of you collectively have the final say. You do not have to go with what I have suggested or an arbitrator has suggested. You do not have to go with what the city has suggested. You can find a middle ground in between the two, or you can do something completely different. There also seems to be a misperception that please offer, please proposal is taking money out of the contingency to keep us harmless. That is not the case. Our proposal has not a single dime coming out of the contingency fund. We are still waiting and still asking for a solution.
All right, so now we've heard from our city management, we've heard from Will Bubedas representing Phoenix Law Enforcement Association. I did indicate before we'd go to the cards, obviously we're still in the public carrying portion of this item, that I would give council members a chance to ask questions of our, either side, I guess, before we go to, there's obviously numerous cards. Councilman Valenzuela, did you have something? I apologize.
Yeah, just something very brief. I'll reserve the rest of my comments for, for a little later. I, I feel obligated to just say a few words. My name was, was mentioned by my very good friend, Will Bubedas, with the great presentation, Will. For those who are watching, and this is why I feel obligated to say a few words, for those who are watching at home, who may be a little confused, this is not a fire versus police showdown. This is not a who's going to get the bonus, who's going to, you know, if, if one, you know, one's going to get the, I mean, I don't understand that. So, so fire, like every other labor organization in the city, has, has actually come in and they, they've signed, in fact, this council just voted on their contract about an hour or two ago. So, so for those who are watching, they may be a little confused at that. I also just want to mention that the fire work schedule in Phoenix is a 56-hour work week. It's not a 40-hour work week, but a 56-hour work week. Hours 55, 56 are double time, and I believe, I, that, I, I believe that there's a certain rule, it could be FSLA, but we can confirm that. But, but there's, there certainly is a reason for that in a 56-hour work week. And also, for those who caught the photo, the firefighters playing volleyball. And, you know, any 56-hour work week, I will tell you, because I am a firefighter, it's a very physical job. And we have an opportunity, we have an obligation to actually do the job and, and to stay physically fit. And so if we have an opportunity to play volleyball or basketball or, you know, lift in the, in whatever fire station you were, you were at, those things are obviously encouraged. We do have a rule, though, when we get a call, first of all, of a firefighter, in that photo, by the way, those fire trucks are in their first duty area. They are in the area that they are responsible for, and if they were to get a call, they have one minute to get on the truck. And that, that rule is the same whether you are in the, you know, 3:00 in the morning and you're in bed, or you could be in the shower, or you could be playing volleyball. You have one minute to get on the truck and to go, and, and so I just wanted to, to clear that up. I mean, for, you know, for those who are actually watching at home, they may be looking at things like that, and, and I, I think those things are delivered in a negative connotation, and I don't think, I don't think that's fair necessarily, but, but I just wanted to clear, clear that up. With all due respect, Will.
Can I respond, Mayor?
Of course, yeah.
I would just like to add, and I don't disagree, Councilman Valenzuela, that the firefighters did just agree to cuts. However, I think the evidence shown that over the last five years, they have significantly increased their overtime. So they're not taking cuts because their actual pay is going up. And I would also just like to add, we made a proposal in negotiations that to allow these men and women to just work out during their lunch break, just during their lunch, not even any other time during their shift when they're already unavailable on their lunch break. And that was shot down by the chief of police and by the city manager. So when you want to compare apples to oranges, we can't even work out at all on duty, because we're expected to actually work during our shift.
If I could just add one more moment.
Councilman Valenzuela?
Well, I will tell you that I would be absolutely supportive of that. Obviously, that's not my purview, that's the city manager. We've had this discussion before. I'm absolutely supportive. I think our police officers should be able to use that time to, to, to get a workout in. But most importantly, what I want to mention, as far as the NFPA standard, two in, two out, and yet, last week, I talked about having four firefighters on a fire truck. I talked about the fact that we would have far more fatalities if we did not have four firefighters on a fire truck. That doesn't mean I'm opposed to having two police officers in a police car. We're more than 500 police officers down. As far as I'm concerned, we need a real plan to actually get staffed, get staffed appropriately. And, you know, just because I am for the safety measures that are already in place on the fireside, doesn't mean that I'm not for the safety measures on the police side. And we need, so, so I just want to make that clear, and, and I think more than anything, what we need, what we need are more police officers on, on the street. So I think that should be priority number one, but we'll go ahead and, and continue. I just wanted to make a brief statement before we move on with the.
I think, no, thank you very much, Councilman Valenzuela, for, for raising those issues. Other members of this council want to ask questions. Councilman DeCicio, and then as soon as we're done asking a few questions, then we'll move on to all the cards that we have here. There's a significant number.
Well, just, maybe just a response, though, too. One, saying you want more police officers and actually doing it are two different things. I mean, where's the plan? Adding 15 officers is like adding one squad for two shifts out of three in one area. That's it. That's not a plan. That's not even a drop in the bucket of what the city of Phoenix needs. We're short 520 police officers. If it was real prioritization, this city would have taken the steps that a couple of us up here have been insisting on occurring, is hiring more police. Make it priority number one. Instead, the city of Phoenix last year bans goldfish at the state fair. That was a big thing that we passed, believe it or not. It did, it actually happened. And spent $650,000 on a garbage study. That was priority number one, but helping our police officers on the street is another thing. The other, the negative connotation of people playing volleyball is because it is negative. It's not a positive thing to see up there. And there is a clear difference, and I think more than anything, there, what you're trying to show is that there is a clear difference in job functions. The, the function of a police officer driving around in a car, looking and pursuing suspects for 10 hours at a time, is a grueling, tough job. I don't know, the jobs that you do is a lot more than me. Even E.J. Montini said, "The worst thing that the people up here can expect is a paper cut." That's the worst that could happen to us. So the, the fact that their job functions are completely different, the fact is that they're down police officers, and the fact that the first time in the city of Phoenix history, there's even a discussion of literally imposing a contract on people when they have shown that they are already under man. Call it for whatever it is, and Will, you and I don't always agree on things, and you know that, and actually, I think it's because we're both kind of hard-headed, and we're both very determined, too, and we believe we're on the right path, though, too. But the thing that I've got from staff, too, and what I'm really disappointed in, is this report, we never saw this report until just now. I mean, how do you answer a report when you just see it right before you? And why wasn't this done with the other groups? I mean, if you look at it, you covered some compensation numbers, you covered what longevity pay, CEP pay, or those things, but this wasn't done, this kind of report, this detailed report, wasn't done with the other groups. We had some that was in the, in the MOU, we saw that, but we didn't see this comparison amongst other cities with other, other groups. We didn't do that with fire, that's for sure. Why? Why police gets a report, we get it the last minute, not able to even counter on a day we're supposed to make a decision? When, when you look at this, I mean, look at this, this is a lot of detail, right? No one comes up with this stuff in one day or one hour. It's done over time. It, it's, why?
All right, I want to get city manager opportunity to respond about the information that was provided here today.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman DeCicio, the, the reason why there's a presentation on police is because this item is different from the others.
But it's not.
You know, there's a reached an MOU, and this is about the council being asked whether they will impose terms and conditions. So we're giving a complete description. Much of the slides in there are brought forward from last week's presentation, and others we had done some research on this week in order to illustrate the issue that our police officers are valuable, and their compensation reflects that, and that the money that the city has put into their compensation has largely been to the merit and longevity system and the pension and healthcare systems.
Well, I got to, I'm just disappointed, though, too. One, we can't look at that comparison with others and then give it to us at the last second. It just, it just doesn't work for someone like me who needs to have information ahead of time so I can evaluate it. The other is, if you look at it, and we were talking about this before, too, the Siegel report, for at least public safety part of it, the others had comparisons with the private sector. You can't really have a comparison with police or fire with the private sector, because there's just no true comparison in there. Clearly showed that there was a shortage. And I got to tell you from my end, there was a shortage definitely at the lower levels. And so if there was an equalization occurring, why is it occurring at their level? Why, it, it just doesn't, it's not logical to me. When you've got the people that are creating the, the basic work, the hard work at the lower levels, and then you've got people at the top at 110%, we also talked about some level of equalization. You, that means that these individuals should have at least come up 2% to 3% right off the bat. I, I, that didn't make sense to me either, Ed. So how does this work?
City manager.
Mayor, Councilman DeCicio, I'm not thoroughly familiar with the Siegel study, but I do know that market, in their assessment, market is between 95 and 105%. That range, so at 98%, they are considered to be within market.
But then you had the individuals at the higher levels at 110%, even if that was considered market, which I don't agree with. Okay, I think market is a lot closer to 100%, but you still had individuals above that. There was supposed to be some level, I remember the debate because I engaged in it, there was supposed to be a level of equalization occurring there, which meant, at least in my mind, people at the lower levels were going to be brought up to a higher level, not necessarily bring the other ones down, but the ones at the lower level were supposed to bring. I remember the debate, I was here. Do you remember any of this stuff too well?
No, I, I do remember that, and I, I don't know whatever happened with that. We have command staff, people are at 116, 120% of the market, not even 110%.
So a lot of it comes down to, Ed, I mean, really, and you've heard this council say this before, it's a strategic planning, what we expect to have done here. Hiring 15 officers is nothing to brag about. It's not a thing that we should even be putting anywhere out there saying, I would be embarrassed to throw that number out there. If you're talking real numbers, a real plan that gradually gets us up there, that is something to brag about. But adding 15, and us up here politicians saying we're going to add more and not ever happen, is just not real. And I think we need to start getting to, to a level of reality here when it comes to dealing with not only our employees, but with the public. The public has told me clearly, they want more police officers. I don't know if anyone up here has been watching the debate, that's been playing out in the public. Nobody I know wants to cut these individuals, except maybe that one guy, but that's it. That's about it, you know? I, I don't know if, if someone's just not hearing this, or I don't know what's occurring here for there to be such an incredible disconnect in the city. So I'll, I'm going to reserve some more time for later, but I'm really, I, I just think there needs to be a relook at what the heck we're doing over here, especially at this level up here on this point here. And saying it and doing it are two different things, and that's what I think we need to do. If you want that, if you hear that, then you need to hear what the real plan is, in writing and directed.
All right, thank you very much, Councilman DeCicio. Councilman Nowakowski?
Will, can you go to page five of your report, your presentation?
Which one? Is it the?
It's the salaries.
For police or fire? That one?
That one. Just some clarification on, so we got two different reports. We have one report from the city saying that we're the top, and we have a report from police saying that we're in the middle.
Well, this is actually not even from police. If you read the top of it, this is what the city presented in fact finance, the city of Phoenix Human Resources survey data, and it doesn't even say we're at the middle, it says we're second or third from the bottom. But yes, that's, that's correct.
Can we have an explanation, which ones are the true numbers or?
City manager, you ought to need to explain the information provided.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Nowakowski? Councilman Nowakowski, they're both true numbers. What, what this shows is base wage, that's just the simple base wage of the police officer, and how it compares to the base wage of others. What the chart I showed was, was we were trying to do more of a comprehensive look at compensation, comparing things that we were able to compare across cities. So that is correct, as well as the other slide.
So basically, you have one that.